Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. We'll move forward to our public hearing. The first matter is RZ-21-8 Delaware Park. And it's for a PUD consideration of a text amendment from PUDC Kincaid to PUDC Delaware Park. The text amendment includes the concept plan and development standards for the High Line at Delaware Park project consisting of approximately 280 multifamily residential units, approximately 18,600 square feet of first-floor restaurant, commercial, and retail space, and approximately 4,800 square feet of restaurant space. And we have Megan with the staff to present for us.
Yes, thank you, Megan Bukasich with the City of Fishers Planning and Zoning Department. So this item is for a PUD text amendment. The existing PUD is the Kincaid PUD is the name of it. And the text amendment would rename that PUD to the Delaware Park PUD. The petitioner for this item is Envoy 106 Fishers LLC. And this is generally located south of 106th Street on the west side of Lantern Road, east of I-69. I will just mention that the petitioner is proposing a full repeal and replacement of the existing PUD ordinance, and that's by a request by staff. So this red highlighted area shows the existing PUD ordinance. You can see that to the north and south lies industrial and commercial uses. These include office buildings and manufacturing. To the east, there's an existing multifamily development, which is the Wellington Place Apartments and Lantern Road Elementary. And then to the west across Interstate 69, there's an existing office park with commercial and industrial uses as well. The existing office park of Delaware Park has about, has six office buildings that are currently constructed within that area. So this PUD is broken up into Area A, Area B, and Area C. Plan Commission, we did receive one public comment for this development, and that was a request from this property owner to be excluded from the PUD ordinance. Staff has spoken with them, and we are okay with removing them from the ordinance. And so we've updated our legal description to reflect that. So I just want you all to be aware of that. So here's the proposed development. As was mentioned, this includes up to 280 multifamily residential units. That would be on the southern portion of the development, so Building 1 here and Building 2 here. Those would be the residential apartments. About 18,600 square feet of first-floor restaurant, commercial, and retail space. So that would be first floor of these apartment buildings, so Building 1 and Building 2. That retail would face this internal drive, which is Pearl Street. And then 4,800 square feet of standalone restaurant space. So you can see that on the northern, or actually, I'm sorry, on the south side of Pearl Street here, here's a standalone restaurant, and then you have some standalone buildings up here on the northern part of the development. I just want to highlight a few things within this PUD ordinance. So as mentioned, it's up to 280 residential units. At least 10% of these units will be studio apartments. From an accessibility standpoint, all units are going to comply with the Fair Housing Act, and all units will be adaptable dwelling units per their guidelines. For architecture, they'll be incorporating the multifamily unit elevations into the ordinance. Those were just heard before the PUD committee and approved by them. You can see that within the petitioner's packet. For landscaping and open space, we are allowing them to submit an alternative landscaping plan that would be approved by staff. And then in addition to that, they are proposing some open space on the site, really in the southern area, which includes a dog park. And then they'll be incorporating community gardens in the development as well. Some additional sustainability standards. All of the lights are going to be, the multifamily buildings will be constructed with all LED lights. It'll include at least eight electrical vehicle charging stations. It'll have occupancy sensing lights within the common areas of hallways. And it will also incorporate drought-tolerant plant species into the landscaping plan. Site access for this area is as shown on the concept plan. So you can see that as shown here on the screen. All of the access and right-of-way improvements will be reviewed through the city's engineering department, through our technical advisory committee, which we call TAC. And so it is subject to additional comments by staff, but will be as generally shown on this concept plan. We've also attached an engineering memo to the staff report that you should have all received. With these recommendations, we believe the traffic entering and exiting the site and the surrounding traffic on the roadways are sufficient for this development. Here's the image for the Fishers 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So this identifies the area as both employment node and neighborhood service centers. So the purple would be that employment node, which is really supposed to be high employment generators, which aligns with the existing office spaces. And then Neighborhood Service Center, that incorporates that first-floor retail space with second-floor residential. And so this really does align well with the Fishers 2040 Plan. Staff does recommend Plan Commission send a favorable recommendation to City Council. If voted on tonight favorably, this will go to City Council on November 15th for final adoption. And as I mentioned, the architectural elevations were approved by the PUD committee earlier this evening. There's Steve Harden here with Fager Drinker. It also has a presentation prepared, so I'll hand it over to Steve.
Thanks, Megan.
Good evening, members of the Plan Commission. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fager Drinker and a resident here in Fishers. With me from Envoy 106 Fishers LLC is Mr. Scott Baldwin. And we've been working with the city administration for probably about 16 months on this project as we talked with the PUD committee team earlier today about that. As we've, I've stood out on the Delaware Park vacant property with the mayor and with the economic development team over the last several years, and we're trying to recruit companies to come to Fishers. And some of the things that we got feedback from them on, they would look around and they'd say, well, where will our employees go for lunch, or breakfast, or a beer after work? Where will they live? How will they walk or bike to work? You know, we would talk about the vision to create a campus environment. We continue to research and look around the country at best practices. We thought of what would Google do, or Facebook, or some of these other companies that are cutting edge. And the thing that just kept coming back to us was that it's the importance of creating a walkable, bikeable campus environment. Companies today, when they're looking at where they're going to select a site, they look dramatically at where will they find the talented young employees that they're trying to attract and compete, compete for. So we began looking through, how do we do that? Let's, how can we create a successful mixed-use development that will do just that? In August, the City Council approved the economic development agreement for this project. Some of the highlights from that will be that we'll be incorporating and constructing a 1.5-mile loop trail all throughout the project that will run from 106th Street down Kincaid Boulevard, across Sunlight Drive, and then back up Lantern, and then connecting back up around 106th Street. We're also planning to incorporate bike lanes. This development was developed, approved back 25, 26 years ago, back in the day when we thought, let's have all the industrial in one area, the office in another, retail and residential all away from each other. What we've learned since then is the importance of being able to have that walkability, the bikeability, for people to be able to get back and forth to work. The other part of the project that we've really focused on is to have a focus on fitness and health. So we've incorporated a lot of time and energy into creating a world-class fitness area, both indoors and outdoors. And we plan to have, you know, to curate that, not just say that we're doing it, but the project will incorporate, you know, probably once-a-week fitness gurus coming in to do circuit training for people at beginner, intermediate, and advanced levels. We plan to have a dietitian come in to be able to, using the test kitchen, to be able to have how to cook a healthy date night meal with five ingredients or less. We think that companies who would be attracted to come to Delaware Park will find that to their advantage, to be able to have healthy employees, to live in an area where they can walk and bike to work, but also to be able to have a focus on health and fitness, we think makes sense. It's good societal engineering, but it also is something that we think is going to be very attractive to the rest of the development. The, it's very important as well, because there's about 64 acres or so of undeveloped land. And after this project moves forward, there'll be enough land in Delaware Park to host approximately 600,000 square feet of office development. And that would be home to approximately 4,200 additional employees. That may take some time, but it is an amazing location right off the interstate with the new interchange that was built. And so everything that we've done in working with the mayor and the mayor's team over these many, many months has been to how to create this project as the amenity to be, to attract and unlock the, the value that's in the rest of Delaware Park, to create a destination where companies, when we're standing out there, hopefully a year or two from now on, an empty field, they don't have to think about what might be there. We'll be able to see it, and we can take them for lunch or a beer after work as well. Couple of other notes on traffic. That was one thing that came up at one of the earlier meetings, was a question about traffic, and this is essentially a down zoning. So right now, that whole 13 acres on the corner could all be retail. There was a study done by A&amp;F Engineering that looked at what, what the multifamily component will generate versus if that was, that, that multifamily part was retail development. And there would be about two and a half, a little bit more than two and a half times the traffic if it was developed as it's currently zoned for the retail development. So it's about 37% of the traffic that would be generated by the retail development is what will result here from the residential, which isn't surprising. It's a down zone, it's less intensive than what would otherwise be there. So the traffic has been, will be reduced from what could go there. And then I think that, as Megan mentioned, the city engineering department's been very involved throughout the process, looking at access points. And one of the key things they'd asked was to add into, right here, at the southwest portion, an additional entrance to create, to provide the ability for people to use Kincaid Boulevard as an additional way of taking traffic off of Lantern, both for people going down to 96th Street or up to 106th, 106th Street. And, let's see. I think the only other thing was, I think we'd heard from somebody was asking, well, does Fishers need, you know, more apartments? Well, this is a growing community, and we're, I think, all very proud of that. In 2019, some of you might remember this and saw this report that the city did, I think it was in August of 2019, that concluded that Fishers is at the very bottom level of the percentage of apartments compared to all dwelling units. And identified that there was a real need here in Fishers to continue to attract particularly young, talented millennials, and emphasize the desirability of walkability, bikeability, and having amenity-rich developments where people will be attracted to come here. And since that time, there's only been one other apartment project approved here in the city, the Mapledale Project. So we continue to have the need. I think it's also evidenced out by, I think, almost all of the newer projects that have been built here in Fishers are all at somewhere between 98 and 100% occupancy. Normally, 95% is the normal, stable level of occupancy. So there's a great demand, and I've heard from other people that there's, you know, waiting lists of months right now here in Fishers. So we're very pleased to be at this stage, and as Megan mentioned, we had a unanimous approval from the PUD committee on the architecture, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have for us tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions, Steve, from the board?
I have a question. You've mentioned the sustainability component of this, and you've mentioned electric car chargers. I, I do not have an electric car. But I think it's part of our future. Is there any way that you could explain to me the difference between some of these electric car chargers to be able, to make sure that we're going to be able to attract people to come there, to visit the restaurants with some of these car chargers? Because I understand there's a difference in, in levels of them, but I don't quite understand it.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Soller. I believe both you and I will continue to learn about EV charging stations and electronic vehicles as we, as we go along. But we have committed to a minimum of eight EV charging stations. There are, at least from my understanding, there's at least three different types of charging stations. There's the supercharger, which is a Tesla-owned, they select where it goes, they own it, they control it. So we, even if, we could never promise to have a supercharger, because it's not up to us. And those are superpowered, and there's a couple of those here, I believe, in the switch garage here in Fishers. There's also Tesla Destination chargers, and then there's non-Tesla Destination chargers. So we plan to have at least two of the Tesla Destination EV charger. That'll be probably near the, this is, let's see, this is Pearl Street, right here. So we'll probably have those somewhere in, along Pearl Street for people to access who are coming to the restaurants or to the shops. And then we'll probably have the others initially, the non-Tesla Destination will be here for the residents for charging overnight and things like that. We're also planning, we had discussions with the civil engineering team, that our plan is, is to, is to wire the entire development. You know, we, we're committing to eight right now. It's, it's not even something that the government needs to even regulate. We, we on the business side recognize the desirability and where the future is, and, you know, in, in five years, we might have 40 EV charging stations out there. We might, in 10 years, we might have 80. And so we're planning to wire the entire project to have, so that we can easily add more as the demand picks up. So that's, that's, that's my understanding of the three different types and what we plan to do, but thank you for the question.
Okay. Another question is, on those restaurants, those outlawed restaurants, will those be drive-through restaurants? What type of restaurants are you trying to attract there?
So on the north side, so this is, it's two phases, really. So the south side of the project is where what was probably going to be, if everything goes according to plan, begin, you know, March 1. And then the north side, Thompson Thrift is taking the lead on the development of the north side, who is the developer of Fishers District, you know, the yard. And they are anticipating, there's no names yet to announce. We are close to being able to announce the restaurateur for the restaurant here on the south side. But these are, they don't have anybody that I'm aware of that's identified yet. They think that as the project begins to unfold, just like Fishers District, we'll start having more of those announcements. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have one question, Mr. Harden. As it relates, you talked earlier about the apartment units, and it's approximately 280 multifamily units. With Lantern Road Elementary School right across the street there, what type of units are you anticipating there? One or two bedrooms, or three bedrooms, for example? And what is the expected or targeted tenant that you're looking for?
Thank you for that question, Mr. President. The, the intention from the very beginning in working with the city administration was to design a project, we love families, we love kids here in Fishers. This is not intended to be a family development. There's probably appropriate places for that. This is intended to be attractive to the young, talented employees that the businesses and companies here in Fishers are trying to attract. So we've really focused on mostly studios, one-bedrooms. We have some two-bedrooms. There's only going to be at most, I think, four three-bedrooms, I think, is what we're going to have. There's no playground. There's no, all the amenities are aimed at the 25 to 40-year-olds. People can be older than that if they'd like to, to move here, but it's not intended, it's not intended to have the amenities or the types of units that would be for families. So that's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wanting to address the commission may approach the podium, and please share your name and your address and the matter in which you would like to share with the commission related to this matter. Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. Any further questions of the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to make a favorable recommendation to City Council.
We have a motion by Pete and a second by Todd. Kay, roll call, please.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. Silverman. Mr. Fane.
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Aye.
Mr. Stoller.
Aye.
Mr. Ryan. Mr. Seagull.
Yes. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next matter on the agenda is RZ-21-9 Lehman PUD. Polte Homes of Indiana LLC is the petitioner, and it's a consideration of a rezone of 15 acres from R3 to PUDR. The new zoning district will be known as the Lehman PUD. The underlying zoning district for this PUD will incorporate the R5 Residential Zoning District Development Standards found within the city's Unified Development Ordinance, except as modified by the proposed ordinance. The project consists of 35 single-family residential lots, and we have Megan once again to present on behalf of the staff.
Thank you. I apologize, this location map does not identify the streets, but just to orient everyone, this is 126th Street here, and this is Allisonville over here to the west. And then if you travel east along this road, you will hit Lantern. So this area identified as VC, this is the zoning map. This is Holland Park here, so just wanted to orient everyone. But this is for a new PUD ordinance, a single-family residential. Petitioner is Polte Homes, and they are proposing a maximum of 35 single-family dwelling units on this 15-acre parcel. So currently, the property is Zoned R3 Residential. This zoning designation comes from the inter-local agreement between Fishers and Noblesville in 2005. So prior to that time, it was under Noblesville's jurisdiction. When we adopted that in our local agreement, we just adopted the R3 zoning designation that they had in the past. This proposed development is surrounded by single-family residential ranging from R1 to R4. So to the east, south, and west is the Sunbless Neighborhood. You can see here that there are cul-de-sacs that surround this development, so no stub streets to this parcel. To the north, on the other side of 126th Street, lies the Windin Creek Woods Neighborhood, as well as estate residential lots. We do believe that the proposed development aligns with these current conditions. So here's the proposed concept plan. As I mentioned, maximum of 35 lots, but what's shown on the concept plan is 32 lots. The underlying zoning district is R5 Residential. And this chart gives you a comparison of what the Lehman PUD standards are as they compare to our R5 residential standards. So anything highlighted in blue would deviate from that standard. Some of the requirements will be less than what is required, and some of them will be greater than. So for example, they are requesting a reduction of setbacks, but they are also requesting a increase in the living unit area. There are also illustrative architectural exhibits that are going to be incorporated into the PUD ordinance, so here are a few as examples off to the side. Some of the features of the architecture will be that overhangs are a minimum of 11 inches in depth, that no aluminum, heavy-gauge vinyl, or vinyl siding be permitted with on the homes, and that all of the garage doors be decorative in nature. To go over just the design of the layout of the lot, so open space will be provided as shown on this concept plan, so they're, they're proposing a open-space area here in the southeast corner. This will either be a pollinator garden or a reforestation area with a minimum of 20 trees. They are also proposing to have a tree preservation easement that runs along the entire perimeter to preserve that existing tree line. They're ensuring that this is going to be in common area and off of private property. In the past, when we've approved preservation areas on private property, it's been really challenging to enforce, and so that's a recommendation by staff to get those in common area. And I think it's going to be a benefit to those surrounding Sunblessed homes as well. For site access, so they are constructing a local road off of 126th Street, as you can see here. They are somewhat constrained in their site design, being a parcel that has, has been built out around it. There are no stub streets to connect to. This cul-de-sac length does exceed what our UDO would typically allow, but we have gotten approval through our fire department that they are okay with emergency service access for the length of this cul-de-sac, and they have proper turnaround here at the end. And then any of the right-of-way improvements through 126th Street will need to be reviewed by our engineering department through our technical advisory committee. This would include a passing blister. We did receive some public comments on the right-of-way improvements. 126th Street is proposed to remain a two-lane road, so it will only exist as two lanes as identified in our Fishers 2040 Plan. And then a 10-foot pedestrian path is proposed on 126th Street. We are unsure of the path on 126th Street, extending all the way to Allisonville Road or the Nickel Plate Trail, but we do believe that having a path along this frontage is important for future connections to the Sunblessed Neighborhood, either to the east and west, just to get these residents some pedestrian access to Holland Park. So that is a request by staff. This is the Fishers 2040 Plan, so this parcel is identified as suburban residential on that plan, which is defined as single-family detached residential ranging from two to four dwelling units per acre. The proposed development does align with this at a maximum of 2.3 residential units per acre, and that's with the 35 units that are proposed. Staff does recommend Plan Commission send a favorable recommendation to City Council. If voted on, this item will go to City Council on November 15th for final adoption. We did receive public comments for this development, which were provided to you all before this meeting, and staff has responded to those comments and also copied you all on those responses, but we're here to help answer any other questions that you might have, and I will, oh, and I'm sorry, I do have a slide on that, on the public comment, just to go over them. They really deal with drainage, which are some comments received on the setbacks and impervious surface standards, and then on the detention design. And then we also received some comments on the traffic right-of-way improvements on 126th Street and the utility connections, such as water and sewer in this area. But before we open it up to public comment, I will turn it over to Rex with Polte to give a presentation on their behalf. Give me one second while I pull up their petitioner packet.
Thanks, Megan. For the record, Rex Ravitch, Polte Homes. Megan did a wonderful job presenting a lot of the comments that I wanted to make to you all this evening. I'll try not to duplicate, but I do want to hit on a few things that we feel are important. So again, there's 32 lots on the proposed plan. Homes are going to be ranch-style homes in nature. They will have a loft option available to them, but you will not see any two-story homes within the development. Square footage of these homes are going to be about 1,600 to just over 2,700 square feet, and that's the base home. There are additional options and features that can increase the square footage of the homes themselves, but we expect these homes to sell between $400,000 and $500,000, and are very proud to, to be able to bring this project forward. So again, just kind of showing the area, this has kind of the street labels on it for those that may not have caught that during Megan's presentation, but orienting you again to the site, again, with, with the geometry of the site being rather challenging and not allowing for much creativity, we wanted to figure out, you know, how, how to best design the site to move forward. So the very first thing that we do in any case, and more specifically on this site as well, is where does the water want to go? How does the site want to drain? So our engineers looked at that very first thing without laying out streets or lots or anything else. The low point of the site is in that northeast corner, so we would propose to collect all the stormwater drainage, just like every other subdivision would. And then that, that outfall is underneath 126th Street, and then to the north to Shoemaker Ditch, which is a drain to the north of some of the properties on the north side of 126th Street. The next thing we wanted to do was, how do we protect these neighbors? These neighbors have been here for a very long time, and we wanted to try to be the best neighbor that we could. So we did build in, we had the ability to build in a 20-foot tree preservation area. You see that in the dark green around the perimeters of the project. After that, there is common area that will be maintained by the HOA in addition to the tree preservation before you actually hit a private rear yard lot line. So we tried to provide the largest buffer possible in maintaining the mature trees along the tree line, as that was going to be important, not only for our future home buyers, but for the existing neighbors as well. Trying to hit on some of the sustainability features, we want to build that in as much as possible for new projects. Down in that southeast corner, as Megan had mentioned, it would be either a pollinator garden or a reforestation area. You know, with, with this being an empty nester type of development, you don't necessarily see the need for, you know, a pool, or, you know, those types of other amenities. So we thought, what better way to be able to put them kind of back in, in that natural area? So we have that. And then also around the pond, we're going to have natural pond edges. There's an ordinance, or I'm sorry, there's an exhibit in the PUD ordinance that's going to reflect that. But you'll see a lot of taller grasses and things that'll kind of help mitigate the erosion around the ponds that you might typically see in other communities. It wouldn't be that rock riprap that some, you know, you might see in more industrial, commercial types of development, that's not as visibly pleasing. And then also, the grasses are going to be a geese mitigation strategy as well. So anybody who lives near a pond has probably seen or, you know, been subject to some, some geese-related issues. So we're trying to build in all those features, not make this just a run-of-the-mill project. So with the 32 lots, you know, what does the lot look like? How's it going to function? So again, 20-foot tree preservation area, generally a 16-foot common area. And then the lots themselves are actually a little bit deeper than the traditional lot. They're 140 feet deep minimum. They're a hundred and forty feet deep minimum, whereas today, you'd probably see lots a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty feet deep. So there's going to be an extended or a larger distance between the rear of a home and the property line, again, to try to do as much as we could to buffer the neighbors. So we don't have, as you might see, we don't have a ton of ability to get creative with the street design. So it's going to look really shotgun, straight, and narrow. But one way that we've been able to combat that and have seen success in the past is varying the front setback of the homes from lot to lot. So not every house is going to be set back twenty feet, so you can look down, you know, straight through all the lights on the homes. So we're proposing to vary the homes at a minimum of two feet from lot to lot to kind of help with that streetscape aesthetic. And so we've built that in here as well. Megan had mentioned, you know, how to get these people to Holland Park. We're certainly willing to, you know, work with the staff and figure out how to do that. It's important for our residents, as it is for everybody in the surrounding area as well. Again, some pictures of the front elevations of the homes. We did have a number of homes approved by the PUD committee just before this meeting. One thing that's going to be added to the PUD ordinance is that no, there will be no more than three homes in a row that have a flat back. So you would see, you know, on, you know, at a minimum, the third home having a covered patio or a rear facade extension of some kind, whether that be a sunroom. So we did make that commitment at the PUD committee, and that will be added. We'll get that language, you know, tied up with staff. Some of the questions that we had at that first council meeting, one related to kind of sustainability and, you know, ADA handicap-type stuff. We do offer zero-entry showers, so there's not going to be that step to get over the hump. You know, as these will be empty nesters, they're going to age in place, and this is going to be a home that hopefully they're in for quite a while in that later stage of life. So there are, you know, the, in the bathrooms, there's going to be, you know, grab bars or the options for grab bars and things like that that would help people as they age in the homes. Councilwoman Kobel asked what the rears of the homes are going to look like. I wish I had had this in our previous meeting. It would have helped a lot for that discussion. But here's a few examples of what those homes might look like, you know, from the rear. So I think that's it. Touched on drainage, we touched on some of the traffic. We did have a neighbor meeting last Wednesday. There were kind of two separate meetings. There was one meeting that everyone was invited to, and then there was a separate meeting that I had with the folks immediately to the north. We understand that the city's engineering department's going to require a passing blister as part of, you know, what they're going to make us do on one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. So pending the result of that, we are committed to working with the neighbors to the north to provide some type of buffer or screening. And we will continue to have that conversation as we learn what the final design of the road improvements are going to look like. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have or after the public hearing as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner at this time?
On the property now is one old farmhouse, and then there's a barn behind it. There used to be an older home up closer to one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. It was unsightly, so it was recently demolished earlier this spring.
Any further questions? If not, I will open the public hearing at this point. Anyone wishing to address the commission on this matter, you may approach the podium. However, before you do, I'll have a few guidelines for us. Since we do have a significant crowd today, we want to do things as decent and orderly as we can. So each presenter will be given two minutes to share their comments. And if we do have someone who is a spokesperson, either for or against the petition, they will be given five minutes to represent the group that they're presenting for. But whoever wants to approach the commission, feel free to approach the podium. Please share your name and your address and the matter in which you would like to share with the commission as it relates to this particular petition.
Hi, my name is Chris O'Malley, and I live at eighty-ninety East one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. My home is in a subdivision, which we hadn't mentioned yet. It is probably Fisher's smallest subdivision, where there are four homes, but it is an official subdivision called Hollywood. It's directly across the property and directly across the entrance from the proposed site. Our biggest concerns are safety. And the number-one concern that I have, and I've shared with my neighbors, and I believe they agree, is this passing blister. Because of the way our property and the entrance to Hollywood is positioned, a passing blister will be just to the east of it. And while speed is thirty-five miles an hour currently, we know they're in excess of fifty, fifty-five. It's really bad. But putting in a passing blister on that piece of land will go right in front of and just feet from where our entrance is. So if you're pulling out of our property and someone's trying to pass someone on the north side using that passing blister, they will come within just a few feet of where we're coming out of our entrance. And we're very concerned about that. If someone's turning left, we're trying to get out of our drive, and then there's cars coming this way, and they're using that passing blister. And I know with passing blisters, nobody slows down. We get passed, actually, in a no-passing lane as we're turning into our own property. But that's my biggest concern. And then the other is that I think, I know there is a zoning rule about passing blisters, but as you go down one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, there's very few of them. I think there's just a couple, maybe one at the new Lantern Reserve property, which went in just a couple of years ago. And that blister actually incorporates an entrance into, I believe it's called Bentley, which goes into Sunbless. So it's much different. It's not really a passing blister. It serves multiple purposes, as going, entering Sunbless, and then also perhaps as a passing blister. But then all the way down the street, Ensley and all the other streets, there are no passing blisters. And it works out just fine, that people slow down, someone turns into those major streets, and then they move on it. And that's my biggest concern, is we're going to create a major hazard, not just for our neighborhood, but for the speed and the way people drive on one hundred and twenty-sixth Street now. The other concern I have is the way the street is constructed, that shotgun street he mentioned. We're afraid of people, we're almost directly across from that entrance. We're afraid of people flying down that road and then right on one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, which we have seen with the Lantern Reserve. Lantern Reserve has the same type of shotgun-type street, where people are just flying out of there, because their stop sign is actually maybe twenty feet back off one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. And so by the time they get past that, they're entering an area that's not stopped, and they just swerve right into traffic. So those are my major concerns. I understand progress and subdivisions being added. I also am concerned, from an aesthetic standpoint, that we're, we have this, I believe, situation where there's a trend now to pack in homes, instead of, you know, creating the nice subdivisions where people have property and separation between houses. I also think that's an issue, too, when it comes to fire. If a home is really, really close to other homes and it catches on fire, greater opportunity for it to spread to other homes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have a way to time the presenters?
Hi there. I will just read what I have written, so I will not go over my time, I don't think. But thank you very much. My name is Carrie Davis. We live at eight-zero-nine-zero East one hundred and sixth Street, actually next to Mr. O'Malley. We also have concerns about the passing blister on the north side of one hundred and twenty-sixth Street adjacent to our properties. The blister would allow cars to pass traffic turning left into the new development. From what we've learned, the passing blister would terminate near the entrance of our driveway. I should also say, we have eleven children collectively between our four, not just us, between our four properties. And with the bus picking them up there, there is actually a concern there for the additional traffic with the passing blister terminating right at the end of our driveway. If the blister goes in, the traffic won't be forced to slow down or to stop. They'll remain traveling at the posted, as he's already said, thirty-five mile per hour, but we often see people going a lot faster, not stopping for the buses when the bus picks our kids up right there. As residents of our family neighborhood, we really want to make sure that traffic does slow down. We would not like to allow that traffic to go faster with there being the additional lane there. Also, the decrease in the wooded area. So right now, if you look up at the four lots, there is a little wooded area between our shared driveway that comes right off of one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. That's going to be decreased significantly to put in the passing blister. And we're concerned with our shared driveway not only having less privacy, but being even closer to one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, where we're allowing traffic to continue. We know that there has been precedent in other areas developed in Fishers where the passing blister has been allowed to not happen for different reasons. And I know that, I've been told that some of that is because of intersections, but we believe that the entrance to our neighborhood poses similar issues. Lastly, we have also concerns with the trail, not with the trail. We love the idea of trails. We like the walkability of Fishers. We also know that a lot of our utilities are on the other side of the street that will be where that new trail will be put in, and we're concerned with utilities and needing to move all of our utilities if that happens. So those are our main concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I got it under two.
You sure did.
Hi, my name is Randy Seibert. I'm at one-two-nine Northland Street. So actually, I live right there. I built here thirty-eight years ago and never dreamed that thirty-eight years later I'd still have open land behind me, but it has been wonderful. I know and knew that it was going to go away. I know the people that owned the property, and I know the history and story behind the property. So I'm, there's a lot of worse things that could go in there. I first want to support the no-passing blister. I know where these guys are and where they live, and there's no, we don't have one at Ensley. We don't have one, any of the other roads that go into Sunbless along there. There's no passing blister, and it's not needed. Traffic doesn't get backed up at the left-turn lanes. And so I would really ask for a variance on that. My concern is, one, the trail. You've talked about trail. I think it's really important to connect both Ensley and Bentley somehow on the south side of one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. So you don't have to cross one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, keep it on the south side. There should be easement enough. There's plenty of land on both of those areas that Fishers actually cuts. So I'm assuming it's Fishers quote-unquote easement property. So I would strongly encourage to connect those with the trail. The drainage is one of my concerns. I know Rex talked about all the drainage going to the lake. Where I live, I get a lot of groundwater off of that field. Our lot is lower. One of the highest points is right where we are, over in the farm area. And so it's probably one of the highest areas there, but we get a lot of just groundwater. So I don't know what's going to happen to the topography of that area, but I want to be careful that we don't affect the people where I am now. My backyard is still soaking wet from the rains we've had last week. And so the other thing, I guess, is for Rex, I'm concerned about the HOA cost. He's talking about it being in excess of nine-hundred dollars a year, which seems excessive for thirty-some homes. But I understand support of the trees and everything else. We need to work on that.
And Mr. Seibert, you're beyond your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
Hello, Peter Dom, one-two-four-four-zero Hayden Court. I just want to say I appreciate what Rex is doing and what Polty is planning here. I think it's going to help. I like the twenty-foot perimeter around, retention of the trees, very helpful, and the extra common area. And Rex may be able to help me here, but I was under the assumption that this was not part of the city of Fishers right now, and that it may become so later. If you guys could help me understand the timing behind that and your thoughts in how to, you're going to plan to incorporate that in to the city of Fishers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, folks. I'm Chris Welsh. I live at seventy-eight-thirty-two East one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. That is about right over here, where it says where the two L's are. My comment is related to the walkability of one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. You're less than a mile away from this project. And I would submit to you that this section of one hundred and twenty-sixth Street is not walkable. You have, excuse me?
Amen.
Well, I have pictures of my wife walking our dogs down one hundred and twenty-sixth Street, avoiding traffic. We've invested millions of dollars in our trail system, as you know, on Allisonville Road and on the Nickel Plate Trail. We have, we're less than, you are hundreds of feet from Holland Park, and you cannot get there from here. This road is very narrow. I encourage you to, as you go home tonight, to drive through this section of Fishers. And I want you to compare it to what we're doing in other parts of Fishers, where maybe many of you live. And I would just submit to you that I think any project that is incorporating additional pavement for cars needs to stop, and you need to consider additional pavement for human beings to walk and to ride their bikes, to take their eleven children for a walk to Holland Park, or to walk down to the trails that we've just spent millions of dollars on. So that's my comment, and I really encourage you to strongly consider this plan in view of the master plan. I heard Megan say that we don't know how we're going to get this ten-foot walkway through, or this biking and walking trail. Why don't we figure that out? Before we, you know, pave across the road so we can get cars through faster? That's my, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Douthat, and I live at eighty-one-ten East one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. I live directly across the street from where this new planned proposed subdivision is going. I've lived at my property for seventeen years, and we chose it because it's a beautiful wooded property. My house is set back from one hundred and twenty-sixth Street by three hundred feet. And because of the wooded easement, and also within that, we, as our Hollywood subdivision, have a barrier that allows our children to play safely. And I have a child that's seven, and we all have young children, the four homes right here. So if they put a passing blister here on our north side, it's going to go into the wooded area that we have, and the cars are going to be even closer to where our children play. The increase of adding thirty-five homes in this tiny, what to me is a very small acreage, cramming them in is going to greatly increase our traffic on one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. People speed. There is no police officer monitoring one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. With the construction on State Road Thirty-seven, people are taking detours down our road. This is a residential street. This is not a thoroughfare. But they speed forty-five to fifty miles an hour down our road regularly. We have school buses that are trying to stop and let children in and out. If you add that passing blister there, you are greatly increasing a safe, you know, you're making it very unsafe for our children. Also, you know, the headlights of people pulling out from that entrance is going to go straight into our homes across the street. We don't want to live in a zero-lot-line subdivision. That's why we chose our property and have maintained it. I'm also concerned about drainage, because Shoemaker Ditch, which we call a creek, runs directly in my property. And I'm already having erosion. I'm going to have to rebuild my fence in the back on my property because of the erosion. And if you add that pond, you know, that drainage pond, I just, I need some more information about how much that's going to increase the drainage issue behind my property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Davis. I live at eighty-ninety East one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. You heard from my wife Carrie earlier. So that puts us right here, across the street from the proposed development. I want to echo just about everything that my neighbors have said. I wanna echo, uh, just about everything that my neighbors have said already. I also want to thank Rex from Pulte from listening, for listening to our concerns. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of the bullet points that we've outlined, I think we've done a great job of sharing those with you. I just would like to ask everyone here to consider this area along one-hundred-and-twenty-six Street as a residential community because that's what it is. Though we're on a road that is, has a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, I walk along that road daily and I see other people walking along that road daily. We've had accidents with pedestrians being hit just trying to get out of Sunbless or whatever, you know, disjointed community they live in, trying to get to the trail, trying to get to the park, trying to get to Connor Prairie. We love where we live, it's one of the most beautiful and historic areas of Fishers. Um, we're thrilled to, to know that a two-lane road is going to be preserved. Um, we'd really like to see existing trails and sidewalks connected and if that brings slower traffic because we need crosswalks to connect all these disjointed segments of, of sidewalks, I say that would be a benefit. Let's eliminate passing blisters, let's force traffic to slow down and stop and be courteous to their neighbors. Let's create more obstacles for cars and easier, um, pathways for human beings because that's what's so beautiful about this area. Um, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Abraham Wonderjam, I live at one-six-three-three-one Loire Valley Drive. I'm here this evening to express some thoughts, uh, hopefully for the potential homeowners in this division, should you approve it. I live in a Pulte home. I live in Britton Falls. My Ascend model has eighty-two interior walls. Of those eighty-two interior walls, twenty-nine of them were out of square, not level or not plumb. I have seventeen windows, of them six are bowed aluminum windows which I had to push back in, reseal, heat. Uh, the cleaners for Pulte, uh, well, they decided to put their feet on the sill, lean out with the window. Two-hundred-pound men, uh, bend aluminum quite easily. My house is built with only one end trust. It wasn't built with two. I had a washboard facing the west with the wind hitting it. The concrete, I've seen concrete issues where base, or slabs have been poured, they have left uncovered, they've cracked, there are corners that are broken off. Uh, they operated what I would consider to be in a legal septic system for over a year and a half. We weren't even connected to the city sewers, we had these huge tanks where we were dumping waste. Trucks would come out three times a week, four times a week to clean them and forget to close the back valve and the raw sewage would be dumped right down the street. That was fun. In two thousand and seven, the city council, uh, amended the PUD to, when Pulte decided to add to that property out there. Uh, they have violated that PUD religiously ever since. Uh, they are required to maintain the property on a yearly basis. There are things that aren't fixed for years, there are trees that need replaced that aren't replaced. Uh, the language is very clear in the two thousand and seven PUD, you can read that. And finally now, we're going to be going through transition. In other words, Pulte is leaving us. In March of twenty eighteen it was announced. We have an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar budget. And in the first two years, there's six-hundred-thousand dollars worth of expenditures that are going to be needed to bring the community up to things.
Sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to cut you off for two minutes or...
Yes, thank you. I, hopefully you will consider this developer very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
How you doing? Thanks for your time. Brad Hendricks, I live at eighty-one-hundred, East one-twenty-six, which is the hollow wood subdivision. Uh, my neighbors have spoke, so I won't go through it. Heck, well, I do, I am opposed to this passing blister, it's, it's directly in front of my property. Um, I'm concerned about the headlights shining into my windows at night as people are leaving the neighborhood. Um, I have been talking with Rex about it, so, but I haven't got a confirmation, a hundred percent that we're gonna do anything about that, so I'm a little concerned with that. A big thing too, as Laura mentioned, uh, her property and, um, is directly to the east of mine, the runoff from this pond, I don't really understand how this all works and I'd like more information. We have an unregulated drain that goes underneath one-twenty-six Street from this property through, it winds through our property out into Shoemaker Ditch. Being unregulated, what I was told by Hamilton County and the, the city of Fishers told me years ago, because we have an erosion problem, it's not their problem, it's Hamilton County's problem. I called Hamilton County, they told me it's an unregulated drain, it's not their problem. My question is, whose problems are it gonna be? Uh, if, obviously there's, there's less surface here, we're gonna have streets and runoff, more runoff probably, that's not gonna absorb into the ground, so I don't understand how this detention pond work. Are we gonna get some of that outflow, more of it into this creek and further erode our properties? Like she said, she's already gotta replace her fence. I have two bridges, um, halfway down my property that, uh, you know, are gonna be washed out if we don't get control of it and we're just talking about adding more water. So, a little concerned there, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I will close the public hearing. We'll give the petitioner an opportunity to respond to the comments.
Uh, I'll try to address these collectively, I have some notes that are kinda out of order, so bear with me. Drainage seemed to be the one that had the most concern. Um, so, you know, the first thing with, with Mr. Seibert, who lives kinda at the northwestern portion of the property, um, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to grade everything into our site that's actually gonna be, you know, required of us as part of the stormwater ordinance and engineering department might be able to confirm that, but, um, you know, so everything's gonna be graded towards us, everything's gonna have a rear yard swale and then that, that water will be within our collection system, get routed to the pond in the northeast corner. Now, as far as, um, some of the other concerns about what happens downstream or on the north side of one-hundred-and-twenty-six Street, very valid concerns. Um, and it is under the county's purview to review and approve this, but there are certain, you know, design and technical standards that we have to, uh, abide by and they get to review it. I think they have a third-party consultant also review it before they actually give us approval to move forward with any land development or construction activity. So it's gonna go through, you know, multiple processes for that, but, um, with respect to how much water is actually gonna get to these folks to the northern side, or to the north side of one-hundred-and-twenty-six Street, all the ponds that you see, um, over the last handful of years, you know, probably fifteen, twenty years, uh, they're required to have a, a controlled release at the outfall point. So, you know, when a, a ten-year storm happens or a hundred-year rain event happens and we collect all this water, it doesn't mean that all that water's gonna get to those folks today and now, so they're not gonna be quote, drinking from a fire hose. Um, it's gonna have a controlled release, so that means that we will retain all the water, it will have a continuous controlled release over a longer period of time for the amount of water. So if we have more water that we, you know, that happens from a rain event, it's just gonna take longer for that water to eventually drain. So there should not be any downstream, um, negative impact with, related to how much water's gonna be going there. Um, so we'll certainly be working with the county, you know, as far as the drainage is concerned. Um, there was a question about the annexation, so as I understand it from the planning department, um, you know, traditionally over the last handful of years, you would have annexation of a project that coincides with its zoning. Um, the annexation's not actually gonna take effect for a handful of years down the road, um, but it will become part of the city of Fishers, that's how you have the jurisdiction to be able to approve the zoning. So over the long term, that's how the property's gonna end up making its way into the city of Fishers. Trails, uh, so we do have the trail network that we're gonna install, you know, from, from property line to property line across our frontage. Um, even if it wasn't required upon us, we'd wanna do that anyway because connectivity is very important for, you know, the future residents of this community. Um, you know, with respect to connecting it east and west and how that occurs, there is limited right-of-way to the east and then as you get over to Bentley Drive here, uh, there is a, a D-sail lane for cars to get over, slow down before they make that turn into the community. So there's limited right-of-way and then there's also limited space to be able to put it, put a trail to there, to be able to connect to the sidewalk that terminates here at this point. Um, so we do feel that the best possible solution to connect people to, um, the park is gonna be to the west and certainly understand, um, Carrie and her husband's concerns about there's being, there is utilities south of one-hundred-and-twenty-six Street in that general location. Putting a trail there, uh, should not affect his utilities, but we're gonna continue to work on that, we're not just gonna do something reckless, uh, and, and take out utilities for the area. So we'll work with the city, um, and the engineering department, um, and all the private utilities that may be necessary to make sure, um, that if that segment's connected, whether it's by us or the city or some combination of both, um, that, that's done in a proper manner. Um, I think those were the big ones. Um, if there's any other questions that, uh, the commission has with me, I'd be happy to answer those at this time, otherwise we appreciate your time, uh, and we look forward to a favorable recommendation to the city council.
Thank you.
And Howard, if I could just, uh, respond to some of those comments as well, just, uh, expanding on what Rex has mentioned. Um, so, uh, pond design, so that will need to meet the standards for detention. The goal of any new development is that the drainage improves in this area, uh, that doesn't, it doesn't get worse. And so there will be a detention design with that pond, um, but also storm pipes that will help capture that runoff. Um, for the sidewalk along one-hundred-and-twenty-six Street, uh, that has, it is a priority for the city to connect all areas of Fishers. Um, so just to give, uh, the residents who spoke on that a little bit of context of where we're at with the pedestrian connectivity. So earlier this year, we did an update to our Fishers twenty-forty plan and that was a, something that was mentioned and what we heard again and again from residents is they want additional sidewalks and, um, staff is on board with that. And so we are working with a consultant currently on doing a trail gap analysis in this area between Allisonville Road and the new Nickel Plate Trail is one of those priority areas that we are focusing on. Um, so it is a priority for us, that obviously is dependent on available funding, but just so you all know, um, we are working on a plan for that. With this Pulte development, uh, as Rex mentioned, it's a requirement for them to put that path in and it's a priority for us to connect residents to Holland Park, not only existing residents, but the new residents that will be living in this neighborhood. Um, so they'll install their portion of it and then any connection to the entrances of Sunbless, um, is something that we'll wanna get in there, we'll just need to look at the feasibility of, of what that really looks like. Um, a couple other items that I heard, uh, one was the, uh, we'll mention, we'll address the passing blister, we have our director of engineering here, um, who can talk a little bit about passing blisters and the requirements for new developments. Um, but with that, we also heard concerns about the speed on the local road, so we will have speed limits for that, it is a residential area, it will be a local road and so, um, the goal is for that not to be a road that residents are speeding down, it's not a through street, that cul-de-sac, so it should only be, uh, serving the residents and the visitors in that area. As far as the homes, um, being located close together, so Indiana building code requires homes a minimum of ten feet apart, um, so that would need to be met and these homes are proposed a minimum of fourteen feet. And so, uh, it does address any, uh, fire code or building code requirements. Um, and then with the annexation, this will be required to be annexed into the city of Fishers, uh, just won't happen immediately, um, but they'll go through the approval process and through city council, I would say probably here in the next couple of months, as soon as Pulte submits that petition, but that's very standard in any development. Um, otherwise, I, I would invite, uh, Jason Taylor with our engineering department, um, to go over the passing blister and what those requirements are.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jason Taylor, director of engineering. Um, there were a lot of comments concerning the, the passing blister and how that is an unsafe situation and when actually it would be the opposite. By not introducing the passing blister, uh, you can see that it would cause congestion as well as there, in this particular location. Without getting into the design further and having that laid out to us yet, initially it looks like there may be some site issues along one-twenty-six Street for vehicles. So, uh, we would, at this time, be recommending a passing blister be installed with the understanding that the, of what the residents are concerned about and the impacts to the north, um, on, closer to their homes in that tree line preservation area. Um, but in this particular situation with approximately thirty-five homes going in and a single entrance exit, uh, it would be even more prudent for us to put that in i-if we're able to fit that in within the right-of-way. Uh, in addition, there were some comments concerning other areas in the city that we have relaxed or given a variance to that. Uh, one of them I think was given as an example of Iron Point out at near one-hundred-and-sixth and Fall Road. That was unique in the sense of, um, it, it's an actual intersection in the way that the, the roadway was aligning and that passing blister would, uh, be set, designed. We went ahead and did a different approach on that so that it still obtained the same, uh, the goal of improved safety for the, the turning vehicles, um, into that subdivision, which is a similar layout, that it's a single entrance exit point. Um, there are some others that we can see that in the city along one-hundred-and-sixth Street that are older neighborhoods or even one-hundred-and-twenty-sixth Street, that we are, as a city, going back and looking at adding passing blisters because it is an unsafe situation due to the congestion of those turning vehicles. Um, but I do understand the concerns, uh, that they may have with, but it, to me, the safety concern is less about encroaching closer to their homes, it's more of the vehicular, the speeds, the, in, in that situation. Uh, we will actually coordinate with the schools on this and we've had these passing blisters throughout the city, so the, the bus stops should not be a, an issue for concern on the safety side of things, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the, the installation of a passing blister.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions or comments from the board? Probably just a couple and I, I certainly appreciate all the comments that were made by the, the folks that came up here. And Megan, I just wanna get a clarification point. The north side of the street over there is unincorporated Delaware Township, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, you know, technically you're not resident of the city, that's FYI, right? You're not paying taxes into the city, but I certainly appreciate your plight because we still wanna welcome you as residents. I would encourage you to take a look at voluntary annexation and talk to Megan Schaefer on how that occurs. Um, I think that one of the reasons why we don't have connectivity and trails around the city is because we have these pockets and these Swiss cheese holes and everything else and if you take a look at that map around the city, you see where that occurs and you see where we get breaks in, in pathways. Am I wrong, Megan, what occurs there?
Yeah, so, yeah, trails have been installed.
So what I'm trying to say is, is that I am certainly a proponent of getting a trail on one-hundred-and-twenty-six because I know that route very well, because I, I've gone down there thousands of times, I betcha, and, and you do have some topography issues, but if you annex yourself in the city and you give us the right-of-way to put a trail in, it's gonna make us a lot easier to go ahead and put a trail in, particularly on your side of the street, right? And we can work with the outtree preservation and everything else. It just makes it a lot easier when you become resident of the city to do that. I'm just gonna, just be flat-out honest with you. Um, as it relates to the passing blister and, and, and things of that nature, I, you know, I'm gonna defer to both TAC and, and Jason and his engineering department on what is safe and what is not safe. Uh, I think in terms of the, the water detention and what's going on down, uh, you know, down into that, that creek area which you guys were referring to, you know, certainly that's gotta make it through TAC, which is another engineering deal, it's gonna get highly scrutinized of what's gonna go on there as, as Megan talked about. Um, i-if it is an un, uh, and I can't remember the word that we used, undesignated drain or unregistered drain, it's absolutely the county's issue and I'm happy to get, you should talk to Jason on who to talk to over the county and I'm sure he's be willing to hook you guys in and make sure that you guys can talk to the correct person. Uh, I think Brad Dreamer used to deal with that back in the day at times, so Brad would probably be another good reference to talk to about how those all unregulated drains are, are actually regulated and I believe that's county. Um, but, but as we continue to, to look at these projects and, and my friend down in the back where I see at all the council meetings, I can't remember your name, I certainly appreciate all your comments about, about Pulte and your issues that you have with Pulte and I'm not gonna sit there and belabor whether they're true or not true, I'm just gonna tell you this particular board deals with zoning, I, I would think you'd be better off telling council that and I'm saying that because I can hear it a second time because I'm on council, but, you know, they're the ones who are gonna decide which developers to work with and not the planning commission. So, I, I appreciate your comments, but I probably would urge you to probably talk to the correct body as it relates to those comments you wanna make there. Um, overall, I think it's a, it's a very good infill project, uh, that we have there. I mean, it's a continuing concern that we have about housing here in the, in the city of Fishers. We are vastly underhoused, believe it or not, and I know everybody looks at that and goes, well, look at all the stuff you're building. If you, if you look at the trends and you look at everything else, w-we need more housing. So, and I'm not saying we got this thing perfect yet, but we're getting there, um, with everything and I'm sure we've got some other comments going up and down here, but I, I believe this is gonna be a, a very good, uh, project, you know, when it's ending. I think the product's gonna be great for the neighborhood which it serves, I think they're trying to be respectful to all the neighbors. neighbors. And certainly, we on planning commission and council, and again, I said on both, I want to be, you know, mindful of your concerns. But again, we, at the end of the day, need to listen to our professionals. When they give us advice, you know, I need to have factual things that go, that say, this is not going to work, and I'll show you why it's not going to work. And then I can have my guys say why it does work and show that. So, you know, we're put in a tough spot by saying that. And I get it. I live on roads where people don't pay any attention to speed limit signs, right? And there's kids all over my neighborhood, and I shake my head at them constantly. So I feel the plight. That being said, I am supportive of the project, and I do believe it'd be a great infill project from that standpoint. And I'll defer to my other members of the commission.
Thanks, Mr. Peterson. Any further comments?
So that would be under city's jurisdiction. There's, I think it's incorporated all the way along in this area. So the current zoning is R3. It's being used, I would say, as more of a farmstead, agricultural, estate residential lot. Yep, it's zoned for R3 residential, which is, I would say, a medium density residential product.
Rex, I think you had a question.
I was looking for a little clarification on the one street on the, on the neighborhood here. I believe that there's some kind of a standard here in the city about having multiple entrances and exits, at least two, for the purpose of emergency vehicle access.
Yeah, so our fire code requires that any development that's 50 homes or greater have two access points. That's for emergency services. Because this is under 50, it only requires one access point, which is what they're proposing, that local road off of 126th Street. Unfortunately, surrounding this parcel is all private property, and there's, we'd love to get another connection in there. It's just, it's just not feasible with how it's been built out around it.
All right. And another question also, if you, if I may.
Yes, you may.
And this is pertaining to an email that you sent to all of us the other day regarding the stormwater runoff and how it's going to be dealt with. Says here that you also requested drainage tiles be placed between the homes to alleviate water pooling. I know from personal experience, there's only 12, approximately 12 feet between each house in my neighborhood, and we get a lot of pooling between houses, even though the land is graded to make the water go away. It has to be a situation where it hasn't rained for at least two weeks for that to actually dry out. And because it stays wet, it causes molding on the siding, and I'm sure it's causing damage to the foundations as well. So...
Yeah, so we did ask Pulte if they would be willing to install drainage tiles between the homes. It's my understanding that that's not something that they would really, were looking to do with this development, but it's something that staff did request. Rex might be able to address that as well. Drainage tiles certainly would capture more runoff in that pooling. However, staff is confident that even without those drainage tiles, that drainage could be appropriately accommodated. But if this board did feel that it needed to be addressed, that is one solution, a recommendation that could be made.
Thank you, Megan. Rex?
So I guess at this point, I can address individual or I can wait till the end, however you want to do it.
Why don't you wait till the end? We'll make, see if we have any additional questions. Any additional questions from board members? Yes, feel free.
So the, the section between Allisonville Road and Lantern Road is, in our Comp 2040 Plan, is shown as a two-lane road. I think Megan had mentioned that previously. So our long-term plan, if there was anything that we would do, because I can't recall the lane widths on this roadway, if it's 10-foot, but if it is not, then we would widen potentially to two 12-foot lanes. But it's not anything greater than that, except for maybe some dedicated turn lanes, such as when the development come in, comes in like we see here. No, we typically shy away from those types of alignments and configurations because that actually introduces a different safety concern because the motorist is driving straight, and then they have to do a lane shift, and they're not expecting that. And then someone will be in the turn lane waiting to turn left, and then you cause that rear-end collision.
Any further questions from board members?
Just one quick comment on drainage tile. Who would maintain that, the HOA or each individual homeowner?
I believe that would be each individual homeowner would be responsible for maintaining that drainage tile.
So a neighbor drops a tree and some landscape updates, and those get congested, it doesn't really solve any drainage issues.
Yeah, if that drain was impacted somehow, you know, then that would either need to be corrected, or it could impede the drainage flow.
That would be homeowner, it'd be the plan.
If there's no further questions, we'll have the petitioner come back once again.
I think the only question that I need to address was Mr. Fain's reference to an email. So yes, so industry standard and what you've seen across Fishers and in every other community that we work in and in the surrounding area, you don't typically see under drains or, you know, under, you know, underground tile, underground tiles, so to speak, on the side yard setbacks or between properties. Again, it becomes a, where do you put it? Is it slanted to one side or the other? You know, then whose drain is it? That kind of thing. You know, and we've seen instances where that's not even 100%. You know, drains are supposed to work, but everything, you know, especially if it's something like this where a property owner has control over what they do and, you know, maybe manipulates the property after the fact. You know, that's, that's something that can be controlled. But overall, you know, I don't think we're willing to do that at this point. It's not required. I don't believe, or we don't believe as a company, I've talked to our land development guys, multiples of them, we don't believe that's going to help. Now, we do understand that there have been some issues, especially out of Britton Falls. So I'm going to address that here real quick. So one of the things that happened out of Britton Falls was with respect to the irrigation system that was installed. So folks that have irrigation systems, more recently would know that you have multiple zones, and that controls how much water and how long the sprinklers are going to go in a certain area as you work your way around your yard. Those systems were designed many years ago, and they were designed only with two zones. So that means that your front yard and your backyard that are supposed to get a lot more water than the side, just because there's a lot more grassy area in between, the sides were getting the same amount of water. So there were some issues there, and then there were some maintenance issues with respect to the landscaping company. So there were things out there that have been brought to our attention over the last handful of months that I believe, you know, more higher up, more higher up folks in my company have been out to Britton Falls, have addressed some of the issues, continuing to address some of the issues. So I guess that's where I'll stand on that issue. But again, we agree with staff and the engineers of the world that say seven-foot side yards between homes is, is going to be sufficient for drainage needs.
Then just quickly, Rex, so we're going from 10 feet to, from 10 feet to 7 feet according to our standard, right? How many lots do you lose if you put them at 10?
I haven't done the math, but if you do it, it's probably three on the west side and maybe one on the east side. So you're losing three lots, you're losing 10% of the project.
Yeah, so if it's still viable project at whatever number that is, 28 homes versus 32 homes?
Probably not.
Okay, so that's what we need to understand. So, you know, when you come back to council, we're going to have to have that question answered as we get there, right? I mean, I appreciate, I'm not really sure what three feet's going to buy you there, but, you know, I get it. But we need to, you need to certainly come with those answers, you know, when we get this to council one way or the other.
Sure. And I did the math on what that would cost. So if you were to install an under drain at every side yard, on every lot of the 32 lots that you're seeing today, I counted 34 sides. You multiply that by the depth of the lot, which is 140 feet, and then you multiply that by the cost of the actual install of the tile, and that's about $65,000. So when you have a project like this, $65,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money, but when you, it's a denominator game. So if you have less lots and you have more costs, that's how you spread it over. There's a certain point where people aren't going to pay for things that they don't feel that they need, just like people don't pick certain options in the home that they don't want. It comes down to that.
Thank you.
So just, it's not pertaining to the drainage per se, but more specifically about the safety of 126th Street. So I'm very sympathetic. I have three kids. The reality of it is, traffic doesn't stop for buses. I've seen it. I've witnessed it. If there is a way that we can take some extra precautions on 126, even to put flashing lights to get traffic to slow down, even if we post signs consistently, residents do not obey them. I've lived in Fishers 27 years across various neighborhoods, across 116th Street, and I've seen it develop from a two-lane to a four-lane that it is today, and still doesn't, it doesn't matter. People don't obey the rules and they don't obey the speed limit. So if there's anything that we can do to assess that, I've driven across 126 many times, and I know it's very wooded in this area, and the roads are very narrow. So if we can look at the width of the lane to see if it is 10 feet versus, you know, 10 feet wide per lane, or if we can increase that, and also the taking into consideration that passing bubble and how it may encroach upon some of the safety issues around some of the driveways, because it looks like there's at least two, if not three, residents directly across, not necessarily just the four home drive-through, but the other two to the west of them, I think, may also be affected by that bubble as well. Just to kind of, just assess that a little bit more, just to see if there's anything additional we can do.
Yeah, we can certainly work with engineering on 126th Street road improvements, and then as this passing blister is being designed, we can work with engineering to pay extra close attention to how, what the impacts are to those residents to the north.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion, make a favorable recommendation to city council.
We have a motion by Pete. Do we have a second? We have a second. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. Zimmerman. Mr. Fain. Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Multer. Ms. Stohr. Ms. Lang. Mr. Stevenson.
No. I would entertain a second motion at this point. We have a motion for an unfavorable recommendation. Do we have a second? We have a second. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Stewart.
Is that a no for?
Can I ask a question? So he voted no, that means he's voting for no recommendation to go to city council. Okay, just wanted to try and...
I understood you, Bill.
All right, so Mr. Stewart has a no vote. Mr. Zimmerman. Mr. Fain.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
No.
Mr. Multer.
No.
Ms. Stohr.
No.
Ms. Lang. Mr. Stevenson.
No.
It's seven no's.
Thank you from our council.
Thanks, Rex. Thank you for your time.
And Ms. Lang's motion does carry. Thank you. Our next matter. Our next matter is TA-21-45, Nickel Plate Trail Overlay. Consideration of a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to establish the Nickel Plate Trail Overlay. And we have Megan once again for the city.
All right, so this item, as mentioned, is for the establishment of a new overlay district along the Nickel Plate Trail. And this would only apply to single-family homes along the trail. And this is a petition that is initiated by the city of Fishers. So construction of the Nickel Plate Trail began in 2019 and is still under construction today. Currently is being paved up to 146th Street, and full completion of the trail down to 96th Street is dependent on available funding. Property owners along this trail, directly adjacent to the trail, where their property is directly connected to the trail right of way, have received support and collaboration from the city throughout these years just to ensure that their concerns are addressed. And this would include the approval of the Nickel Plate Trail Master Plan that was adopted a few years ago. We offer a screening and privacy grant to any single-family home along the trail. And then we also this year are offering Public Works installed connections. So that would be at a rate of $200 per resident for those who would like a connection to the trail. So with this overlay, what we've seen with those items I mentioned, here are some improvements that have been done in the backyards. So these are examples from our screening and privacy grant, and also from the trail connection. So here's an example of a pergola structure someone constructed, and they put curtains around it. So that was what backyard improvements they found would help with their privacy and screening. We've also seen a lot of fences, particularly fences with gates, as residents would like to maintain that access, but would like to cut off direct access from the trail. We've also seen landscaping improvements, so it's a little hard to see, but you can see here that some evergreen trees have been planted. So those are trees that even in the wintertime will help provide some screening between the trail and that resident. And then we have also seen, and this has grown in popularity along the trail, are these connections that our Public Works is installing. So we're somewhat limited in what these connections can look like. There's a Duke easement that extends along the trail, but our Public Works team is installing these connections at the request of residents. So that just kind of gives you an idea of where we're at today with it. So with this overlay, what we're proposing is really an expansion of what these properties would be allowed to do on their homes or on their properties, not restricting them any further. So each resident would be allowed an additional 500 square feet of accessory structure floor area. So that would allow them to accommodate some additional sheds, some additional pergola structures, however they would want to interact with the trail. With that, we're also increasing the impervious surface lot coverage. So as you have additional building area, you need additional lot coverage. And so we would be requesting an increase of 50% for any residential home along the trail. I would say currently the, what's allowed today ranges from 35% to about 45%. So 50%, that's what staff is comfortable going up to without creating any drainage concerns. And then additionally, we'd be allowing an eight-foot tall fence. So it would be six feet of solid fence, and then eight, two additional feet of architectural feature. So that could include a trellis, as seen here, even some sort of pergola feature on the gateway. We've had some interest in that. So that additional two feet will just help add some height for the areas where the trail might be a little higher than the grade of the property. So again, this isn't adding any additional restrictions. We're only allowing property owners to do more with their, with their yard. So if there's any questions, I'm here to help answer that. This is a city-initiated petition, but this does require a public hearing. And I will say that a mailing went out to all the residences along this trail. We send out monthly communications to these residents. And so this meeting was mentioned in that, in that last mailing.
Thank you, Megan. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone who wants to address the commission on this matter, you may approach the podium. Please share with us your name and your address and the matter that you're going to address. Thank you.
My name is Tom Flannery. I live at 13963 Wakefield Place. I also represent my neighbor that is to the south of me. I also represent a neighbor that's four houses to the south of me further because of... because of surgery today on one, and his wife having cancer treatment in Florida. Hello, Megan. I would completely disagree. I sit here, I've been in this room before talking about the trail. I've attended every meeting since day one for three years. The pictures do not represent what is being said. Fishers has done nothing, is what they said on the outline of the trail. I was a participant in it. The people that were in the beginning there are no longer here. You blew that trail through for no reason whatsoever, none. It was because it was cheap. The last letter we had is you weren't going to touch it for another year between 146th Street and 131st. Our trail, if you look out that window and look up 10 degrees, is people with flashlights at 3:30 in the morning outside our backyards. I'm not willing to build a prison or a pergola in my backyard. I sit here and listen to you have all these people come in here from these housing, and you got to have 20-foot of coverage and hiding and this and that, yet Fishers itself does nothing for us. I need stairs to get to the trail. You make exceptions for Cottingham and other places for privacy because they claim it's much higher than ours. Those people are looking at their roofs, they're looking in our backyards every day. For us, it's personal for three years. Every single time, we come in, we participate in the meetings, we're good residents. Nobody listens, nobody's done nothing. Everybody's been out, Jason's been out, PR's been out in the last month. No response three years ago, all I get is apologies. Why $2,000 for selling the steel on the rail for us? I couldn't do anything with $10,000. This thing's 18-foot in the air for me to block what's going on. Why would I build a prison in my backyard? Why isn't my responsibility? Fishers is the one that did this. All I want is privacy and quality of life and safety. That's it. Could care less about nothing else. And so I think it was misrepresentation to stand up here and say, "Fishers from day one has listened and we planned through all this," because it's a complete lie. There's no, there's no trees, there's no curvature of the trail, there's no nothing, it's an afterthought. We come through and it was cheap. They were going to stop it. They did stop it, we had letters saying they were going to stop it. Next thing you know, right on through it goes, by the way, to what destination? You can't even take a sidewalk to get an ice cream cone for the last 20 years. And yet you build a trail to 146th Street. To do what? Look at traffic? There's nowhere to park, there's nothing. You put it through because it was cheap, and you're ignoring longtime residents who built my house in 1996 on that trail, for nothing. You are the ones that failed. You're the ones that sit here with these people that come in here selling houses and stuff. You expect them to do things, and you yourself didn't follow anything that you said, nothing. It was a complete misrepresentation of what was spoken here in this opening. And I represent the two other people that are here, and I apologize for them not being here, they apologize as well. But I, I want, this is all great stuff, but it's nothing, nothing. Why do I have to protect myself for something you built? Look out that window behind you, picture at 3:30 in the morning, which I have on camera, people with flashlights and headlights on, people coming through at all time of day and night, and the trail's not even open. They're expecting a quarter million people through there. It's personal. And yes, we're only 10 to 15 houses in this whole big picture, but nobody planned anything. You followed nothing on the plan. I sent pictures, Megan, I brought them, I said you didn't show any pictures for what it's really like for some of our residents. I take drone shots for you, I went to the meetings, I did everything. Nothing, you've done nothing. Why? Who represents us? It's literally 18 feet from looking outside our window to that trail. There was no forethought in it. It was cheap, and it was on budget, and somebody did it because they were, they just wanted to do it. The thing is, you said that you weren't going to do it. And then all of a sudden, it's going through, the bulldozer's coming in my backyard. I'm not against it, but what are we going to do to mitigate this? Who represents me? You are the ones who are the contractors, you are the ones that come in here. Why? Why have we got no response? Build it, you just built it, and that's it. Because now that it's built, no, don't worry about these people. But for us, it's personal, it's our life. It's our kids in our backyard. A quarter million people is projected to come through there on an annual basis. That's what the, the thing said, right? Where's the buildings? Where's the trees? Where's the 20-foot away from our houses? That was in the original design that we went to and everything. Nothing's been followed, not one thing. Where's our representation? I realize you're a planning commission. Don't believe everything you hear. Go visit our houses. The pictures I sent, Megan, how many pictures have I sent? How many? Would you say at least 20? Would you say you've been out to my property, the PR of Fishers has been out to my property?
Sir, thanks for your, your comments, you're beyond your time, but we appreciate your com-
How much time do I have?
You're, we, I gave you additional time and you-
How much time did I have?
Yeah, you, you mentioned, we gave you five minutes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else? And we're going to limit your time to two minutes, unless you're representing another additional group as a spokesperson.
I'm Melissa Bach, I live at 13511 Effingham Road. We are not part of the Cottingham Estates neighborhood. We're a separate, independent residential area. And I just have two questions that I would like to have addressed in order to understand these things a little bit better. One is exactly what is happening with Cottingham Estates and the proposed fence or screen that was proposed to go along the park side, Cottingham Park. And then, secondly, explaining the difference between the online application versus the letter that we received in the mail when it comes to the funds that are being distributed, if you have more than, I think it was like 130 feet of property along the trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, she may approach.
If I have the same address, can I speak?
Yes, she may.
Mine's all written down.
Yes, we will limit you to two minutes.
Okay. So we built our house 25 years ago when there was a cornfield behind our house and the train. And we originally saved the train people, and while the train, you know, went away, we agreed or bought into the 2019 master plan for the nickel plate trail. And it's still online, everyone can find it. Where the trail went to the east of the railroad tracks, and there was all kinds of pretty landscaping and different kind of venues all along the trail. And we accepted that, our neighbors, a lot of the people on our road, we've all lived there 25 years or more, were original residents. And then you fast forward to Thrive 37, and a low-cost opportunity through some gravel and asphalt down where the railroad tracks were and called a trail. The city offered $2,000 for landscaping through a grant, which you have to get approved after the fact. And that doesn't even begin to provide privacy to our 60-foot wide lot. And especially when you consider, when you stand in our backyard, and like my husband said, we probably have sent 20, 30 pictures from all the neighbors' venues on our, our backyards on our street. And the trail, to me, because I'm sure, it seems like it's as tall as that monitor over there, and I can't go out in my backyard and hear, you know, I'm not six foot four and a big man, and there's people walking down the trail. We have a Newfoundland, people are stopping, they're filming our dog. They're gawking in our backyard, and there's, there's no privacy, and it's the fact that people are up high, plus, I don't like the fact that, I even talked to one of the Fishers police that rides the trail, and said, "Why are you letting people go on the trail when it's not even open?" And, my time's up. Well, anyway, I don't feel safe. I don't, I think that, all I'm going to say is you paid or provided all this money to all the commercial businesses behind us all along there, for the nice berm, the trees, the evergreens and everything. That's all nice and pretty, we have nothing like that. It's like 15, 20 feet worth of privacy, and we're sorry. And I'm just hoping that nothing happens, because nobody's patrolling it, and I don't feel safe.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Mike Akers, I live at 10857 Thistle Ridge. And we utilize the trail, but the same as these folks, we do see people late at night with flashlights on the trail, and it does impede some of the privacy. And the other thing is, I'm in favor of the eight-foot fence, I mentioned it to someone before. We have a privacy fence, but the grade of our yard, from south to north, slopes about four feet because there's a drainage between our, our house and our neighbor's house from the cul-de-sac. But the trail, the grades, the grade of the trail stays up. So at the south or the north end of it, everyone can, our, our house is probably the same as this gentleman right across from these windows, and people are looking in. We have a pool, and you can't see into the pool because it's in ground, but walking around the pool, people can see over the fence. So we're in favor of eight feet, we have a six-foot fence now. And I would like some, the additional 500 square feet of accessory structure floor area and 50% impervious surface lot. I don't understand what that is, if you could elaborate a little bit.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? At this time, I will close the public hearing.
Yes, so let me address some of those concerns. So I'll probably move backward, because that's how my list is set. So clarification on the standards. So that additional accessory structure square footage, so currently, in the City of Fishers, if you're zoned residential, you're allowed, and you're under an acre, which is what most of these lots are, you're allowed 1,000 square feet of accessory structure floor area. So that would be anything that's a detached structure, so a shed, a detached carport, a detached garage, a standalone pergola, that would be included in that accessory structure floor area. Pools are excluded from that square footage. The lot coverage, so anything, impervious surface, would it be any hard surface? So each lot, we restrict the amount of coverage of hard surface on a lot. So a certain percentage has to remain open, free of any structures or pavement, and then a certain percent, we, we cap that. And so with adding additional building square footage, we also increase the coverage amount that is permitted on the lot. So it's increased to 50% coverage, so that would include your driveway, your house footprint, any patios, any accessory structure square footage. That is that coverage percentage that is permitted per lot. So we're increasing what would be allowed on each of these residential properties.
Sir, I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed at this point.
My thing is, our HOA don't permit, have rules, does that mean that that overrides our rules?
So, with the, I will address that question, but public comment is over, as Howard mentioned. So HOA's separate, that's outside of the city regulations. Each HOA is going to have their own separate set of requirements, the public hearing is closed. So, as, there was a question about the online application. So, get with me after this, and I can give you the link to that online application. That allowance is, so it's 2,000 square feet per property. And then if you have over 100 feet of trail frontage, you get 25 additional dollars per foot over 100. So, I'll get your address, and I can help calculate what that grant amount would be, and give you that online application. The online application combines both the trail connection and the screening grant in one. You don't have to do both, you can select which ones you want. But, but I can provide that link to you. Cottingham Estates fence, so when we were having those conversations on the fence, we were not aware that there was a Duke easement along the trail that would restrict what we were permitted to place there. So unfortunately, there is no fence that is going up for Cottingham Estates, even though that is what they requested. But we're working with them on their screening improvements. We're also working, and we've had conversations with the, the two residents that we heard from Harrison Green. So our staff has been working with them on some screening options for their site, and those conversations are continued, and so I'd be happy to speak with those residents and continue those conversations after this meeting. But the item before the board tonight really has to do with the overlay, not necessarily the construction of the trail or the screening grant. So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Megan. Comments, questions from the board?
My comment is, is that, you know, I want, I'm for the overlay. I appreciate the fact that you continue to work with the residents in Harrison Green and those neighborhoods that have the elevation issue with the trail. Would like to definitely see them to work forwards, finding a solution for these residents. I understand that they have privacy issues, and would like to have privacy in their backyard.
You might comment quickly, just so, you know, because, I mean, I've been keeping up with the trail stuff and what's going on there. We, we have a budget, okay? We can only do so much of the trail at a time, and continue to do nodes along that. You've got to give us some time, we're going after federal grants, we're doing everything we possibly can to make that trail a good thing. That's what we're trying to do. But I, I think, you know, and I certainly understand your plight, I, I mean, I've caught people in my backyard taking pictures of my backyard, why they could go that way, I don't know. But they thought they could, so I, I get the incursion. But I'm going to tell you, that trail is not done. It is not done by a long shot. But, you know, we still have buckets of money that we can use for certain things as it relates to municipal finance here in the state of Indiana. So we have to budget those things to kind of take it accordingly, right? And you just need to be patient. I think continue to work with staff to try to mitigate whatever we can, to get your help as soon as we can. But also appreciate the, the side of the city that, you know, although you see that, you know, someone made a comment that we're giving money to all those other people, but we're not really doing that at all, okay? It doesn't work that way, because the state of Indiana doesn't allow you just to do that, because they have laws. So there, there's buckets that can be spent in certain places, and there's other buckets that can be spent in certain places, and there's some buckets that can be spent everywhere, okay? My point is, is that we need to take a, a deep breath for a minute and understand it's a work in progress, and it's not a completed project. If a completed project, I would probably be on your side with pitchforks and torches, okay? But it's not anywhere near complete. Fair assessment, Megan?
That is correct.
Okay, so, you know, we're, we're working on it, I get it, I understand you're not happy right now. I'm just going to ask you to be patient so we can get there. With that, unless anybody else has any comments, I'm going to make a motion for a favorable recommendation to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. Zimmerman. Mr. Fane. Mr. Peterson. Mr. Multer. Ms. Stoller. Ms. Lang. Mr. Stevenson.
Yes. The motion carries. The next matter on our agenda is TA-21-46, UDL text amendment. A consideration of a text amendment to various sections of the City of Fishers Unified Development Ordinance, UDL, including Sections 4.2.3, Interstate 69 Overlay District, Article 6.2, accessory structure standards, and Article 6.17 signage standards. And we have Megan once again on behalf of the staff.
Yes, thank you, I don't have a presentation, because there's really no good graphics to show you all, because it's just ordinance text, which was included with the agenda. So just to highlight some of the standards, let me back up a bit. The purpose of this ordinance is really a cleanup ordinance of our sign standards. So a few years ago, and, and you might have all been familiar with it, especially those who were on Plan Commission at that time, there was a Supreme Court case, and it dealt with signed content and regulating freedom of speech. And so at that time, we did an overhaul of our sign ordinance to make sure that we are in compliance with all federal and state guidelines. Since then, we've taken a closer look at that ordinance and have identified a few other items that need cleaned up. And so that is a part of this text amendment, is just making sure that we're in compliance with all state and federal regulations. We're also incorporating the addition of projecting signs within our signage ordinance. So if a business, rather than doing a wall sign, wanted to do a projecting sign, similar to what First Internet Bank has out here on 116th Street, they would be permitted to do so. That's not additional signage area, they're still limited to the same amount of signage square footage. It would just be the type of sign that they're permitted, and I think that's just the popularity of projecting signs. And then additionally, within the I-69 overlay, we are prohibiting the use of what we are defining as, we're defining what's called "commercial signs." And that is defined as a sign whose display area is sold or leased. So that would really be a sign that the sign is the business. So essentially, for, that, that use as a primary use on that property would not be prohibited within the I-69 overlay. And so that is also being incorporated as a part of this text amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys all have, but this does require a public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing at this point. I'll open the public hearing at this point. If there's anyone who wants to address the commission, you may approach the podium. Please share your name and address and the matter in which you want to address. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Questions for Megan?
Just a clarification. So if I'm reading exactly what you're saying, Megan, is a sign is a business, you're talking about a billboard, okay? So that's what you're suggesting. So, you know, so we don't get billboards all up and down I-69 like we see in other places. Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Just, I have a quick question for our council. The case that Megan was referring to, I presume that's the Gilbert case before the Supreme Court?
Yes.
And what we're doing here with the text amendment is consistent with?
It is because what you're, what we're doing here is strictly time plus a man time restriction. So you're not looking at the signs, see what the signs for, so you just time plus...
Thank you. Would you like to reaffirm your motion?
Yeah, I'll reaffirm my motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. Zimmerman. Mr. Fane.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Multer. Ms. Stoller.
Aye.
Ms. Lang. Mr. Stevenson.
Yes. The motion carries. We don't have any old business staff communications?
There is an item listed for the 2022 calendar. We're still working on that. So we're going to postpone that till next month's meeting. And then for council updates, really no updates. All of the items that we heard tonight, we're on council for first reading last month. So nothing to really share there.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We, second, we are adjourned. Thank you.